Pine Bluff City Council Meeting of June the 3rd, 2013 is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett.
Here.
Alderman Easterly.
Here.
Alderman Stepp.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Here.
Alderman Mays.
Here.
Alderman Ho.
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from May the 20th, 2013 and had an opportunity to read the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that the minutes of May the 20th, 2013 be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have minutes, revised minutes from October the 12th, 2012, and within the minutes, we have amended statement to the effect that Alderman Brummett stated for the record, we have the regulatory basis, financial statements, and other reports from the Legislative Joint Audit, auditing committee, which will be filed with the city clerk's office. So, we will add that amended, the amended minutes to the minutes of May the 20th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Second, the motions moved in properly second, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to the committee reports. First one is ordinances and resolutions.
Mayor, the ordinance resolutions committee met prior to the meeting, we're going to complete number one. Number two will be recommended to be completed. The sponsor has pulled number three and placed it on the table. Number four will be read for the second time, five for the second time, six will be up for the first reading, number seven will be completed, number eight will be read for the first time, and recommend that we read title only on number eight, and then we'll complete number nine. And we have a resolution that we'd like to add to the agenda that was recommended by the ordinance resolutions committee. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with BK&amp;D Limited for an audit of the city's financial records and for transactions for the calendar years 2010 to 2013 and earlier years if needed. I move we add this to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second that we add the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with BK&amp;D. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stepp.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye. Motion carries.
That concludes ordinance resolutions, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Ways and Means, Alderman Brummett.
Yes, Mayor, we have one budget adjustment that's in your packet. It's a $1,000 request from the Inspection Department to purchase equipment. It'll come from within the department's budget. The purpose of this is just to allow them to move the budget from one account to another so they can buy the equipment that they need. I move we accept this budget adjustment from the Inspection Department.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that the budget adjustment, the amount of $1,000 to purchase a computer for zoning official is now open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that the bills for the city of Pine Bluff be paid. Floor is now open for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
That concludes Ways and Means' report.
Thank you. Kind of jumped the gun on you. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Walker.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Holcomb.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Mays.
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for 1:00 PM Wednesday, June the 5th, in the Mayor's Conference Room. Reed Architect Firm will be here to discuss the Merrill Building. We got some numbers on the Merrill Building that's open to the public if you want to come. It's Wednesday at 1:00 in the Mayor's Conference Room. And something else, every year during the summertime, I was talking to some firemen, they have a lot of fires from lint traps in dryers, and they're asking the people this summer to, actually families to pull the lint out of the dryer so they don't get clogged up and cause fires. I think that's all slowed down over the last couple of years since they started mentioning that, but it's something to good look out for this summer while you're at home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't particularly have a report, but Mr. Ken Johnson's in the back, and I'd like for him to give us a report on the big day we had in May last month.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Hey, this past morning, we gave me an operations schedule to apply to fly House of America, and he backed my load in seventy-five years. And happy to say that we really appreciate the hospitality, the way we may receive from the mayor, and the citizens of the city, and our local authorities, and sports events. They look forward to the 18th year, which will be next year, for that being a full effort in the city. But one of the most important things to have to do is that we have an opportunity to support children, kids, who are going to be in the lives of the city of Pine Bluff, receiving young people, and so this is a part of our, of our, of our operations, as well as the operations. And again, we appreciate the, the, the city of Pine Bluff, and the, 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 the citizens of the city, and, 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 and,[559.02]
Of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas pertaining to Animal Control, Section 6. The provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable, and if a part is declared invalid, it shall be excised and the remainder of the ordinance shall be enforced absent the excision. Section 7, this ordinance is of a general or permanent nature, and the city clerk is directed to publish it as required by law. Section 8, this ordinance will take effect on the 31st day after its approval.
Does any, do we have any issues with, is everybody okay with moving forward with this? Are there any questions anybody's got? Or can we spin the rules and go ahead?
It's not, it's not that important.
Well, it is pretty important because we don't have a director of animal control.
It's not that important because I think we need some winter discussion on this because we tried to do this on last year, and even the sponsor of this ordinance decided that they didn't go for this last year, so we need some discussion on this.
We've got two sponsors now.
Doesn't matter, same thing.
Can we read it the second time and then finish it the next time?
We need some discussion on that for sure.
I believe we spin the rules and read it for the second time.
Okay, it's been properly motion, um, um, my, I just went blank. Moved in the second, hello.
I'm not understanding, point of information, I'm not understanding what you're doing.
I want to read it for the second time. Next time it'll be up for discussion. It's already been in the committee and been approved.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that an ordinance merging the Animal Control Department into the Police Department as a division thereof, authorizing the Chief of Police to administer and supervise the Animal Control Division, and named the supervisor thereof, amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to change all references therein from Animal Control Department to Animal Control Division of the Police Department and for other purposes. Any discussion?
I have a question. Who is the co-sponsor on this?
Alderman Walker.
I didn't see it, it wasn't.
It's a new, it's a new addition. In the last page, if they can't find it out.
Okay, see it, I got it.
And that's only additions or?
I, I have a question. When we were merging that, we were thinking in terms of a salary savings by putting it under the, uh, Police Department and they're gonna appoint someone from the Police Department to supervise it.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay, then I'm gonna request that HR, just for informational purpose, from this date on, is that I would like to see a copy of any information, especially the people that we hire, from here on in, whether they're gonna live, whether they'd be inside or outside. I would like that information, copy that information.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Brown, his, uh, his concern is, are there going to be additional money attached to any one serving in the, uh, Animal Control from the Police Department? And I stated to him that there was not, uh, because, uh, Chief Hugh Banks would appoint someone from the Police Department, uh, that is already being paid to work there correctly. And, and you will not be paid any additional money? Okay, so no one will be paid any additional money?
No, no.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure that that is a, a cleared item, I mean, uh, discussion because we did vote for this, I, a little over a year ago, and it was, this council evidently had to be a 5-3 or a 62 because the mail didn't break the tie. And now all of a sudden, we wanna do the same thing that we voted against last time. And I'm listening to Ms. Walker and, uh, Alderman Walker, she says that it's not gonna be any money attached. I don't wanna hear about it in the budget next year, there's money being put in there because we gotta have a special officer to do this for a dog, or to do that, or do that. If, if this is the way it's, it's gonna be written up, that's the way it should be until it's ending. Because sometimes there are a lot of hidden things that we don't get upfront. Late on, it's three to five or six thousand dollars written up in it because we gotta pay a person to do this, or we gotta pay a person to do that. I, I'm just not looking for that to happen. Because I, because last time we voted for this, I did support it. But now, I'm trying to figure out why was it back up if, if, if the majority of this city council voted against it last time? And I don't mind being a minority in, in the vote, but the majority of this council voted against it last time, now how can one of the, maybe two of the people that voted against it can sponsor it now, so maybe it's not any money involved, I'm not sure. I just want it to be upfront what we're dealing with.
So there is no money upfront, or will be added at any time? Uh, and Chief Hugh Banks is, uh, the supervisor, uh, over the person.
Are you making an amendment? Because it's not in there.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not on the, uh, ordinance.
Can we make sure it's written in on paper?
Yeah.
What you're saying, to be amended in?
I think it's understood here, it doesn't say anything about money. So in order for it to be money, it would have to be put in the ordinance. You, you can't pass an ordinance and then throw in money later. So if, if the money is not in here now, it can't come in later.
Okay, are, are we?
In, in the past, we had an ordinance and it stated a certain amount of money for, uh, the person that was the Chief of Police, that was to oversee the department, and it's not there.
Okay, wait just a minute. Alderman Walker, are you through with your comments?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The thing I'm trying to clear is that we could come back next month after we, whenever we decide to, whenever we, uh, vote on this and it passes, we could come back the next month and say, well, we wanna, we wanna, uh, do a budget adjustment for a person over in the Animal Control for four to six thousand dollars, or whatever the case may be. I just wanna make sure that this, that's not our intent. That's all I'm trying to do.
At that point, you can call us on it.
Okay, whatever.
Any other discussion from the floor?
Okay.
Okay, let's do roll call, please.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stell.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Move to further spin the rules and place ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. The ordinance merging the Animal Control Department into the Police Department as a division thereof, authorizing the Chief of Police to administer and supervise the Animal Control Division, and named the supervisor thereof, amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to change all references therein from Animal Control Department to Animal Control Division of the Police Department and other purposes. So what am I doing?
She hadn't read, she hadn't read the second.
I was reading it for you. I'm making your job easy tonight. You should've stopped me halfway through that.
Well, I'll do the second and then we'll, I think y'all voted on the second and then...
Do I have to read it again? Good.
No, no. It's a long title.
Just the title, please.
Oh, please.
An ordinance merging the Animal Control Department into the Police Department as a division thereof, authorizing the Chief of Police to administer and supervise the Animal Control Division, and named the supervisor thereof, amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to change all references therein from Animal Control Department to Animal Control Division of the Police Department and for other purposes. Yes.
Okay, I move with further spin the rules and for the third and final reading.
Second.
Then roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stell.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye. An ordinance merging the Animal Control Department into the Police Department as a division thereof, authorizing the Chief of Police, as a, authorizing the Chief of Police to administer and supervise the Animal Control Division, and named the supervisor thereof, amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to change all references therein from Animal Control Department to Animal Control Division of the Police Department and for other purposes.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? I know I didn't read it. I didn't mean to, didn't want to. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Motion carries.
There we have an ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, approximately eight acres at the southeast corner of the interstate of I-530 and Old Warren Road, up for the first reading.
Whereas the City of Pine Bluff Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 28th, 2013, as provided in Section 6, Acts, Act 186 of the Statutes of the State of Arkansas, the purposes of which was to hear any and all persons interested in amending the zone, zoning ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff by providing for the rezoning of certain property. And whereas it has been expressly stated by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff that the zoning ordinance should be amended to provide for the rezoning of said property, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the following described property be and the same is hereby established and defined B-3 commercial for all future purposes as set forth in the defined zoning ordinance as, uh, as described below. Section 2, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Move to spin the rules and place ordinance on the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Um, the ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, uh, be placed, no, suspend, suspend the rules, roll call.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stell.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, approximately eight acres at the southeast corner of the interstate, of the intersection of I-30, I-530 and Old Warren Road.
Move to further spin the rules and place ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion, uh, moved and properly second that we suspend the rules for second reading. All in, roll call.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stell.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye. An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, uh, the floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't have a dog in the fight, other than I believe in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and that, uh, and I'm proud that Trotter Ford wanted to build in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. So I call, I mean, I, I, I don't think I definitely had a lot to do with it, but I did call someone, I ordered and say, is it an emergency? If not, let's get through with it tonight. So I feel very proud that you all wanna invest in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Trotter. Okay, we have an ordinance establishing parameters for ambulance service in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency up for the first reading.
An ordinance establishing parameters for ambulance service in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Place it on the calendar. We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the sale of real property and to execute and deliver a deed of conveyance in accordance with the terms of the agreement located at 405 University Drive.
Whereas SM, SMR acquisitions has submitted an offer of the purchase of real property located at 405, uh, University Drive, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, the terms of which are outlined in the attached letter of intent. And whereas the council desires to accept the offer on the terms set out in the letter of intent and to authorize the mayor to execute a copy of the letter of intent, a settlement consistent with the terms, and also to authorize the mayor to execute a deed conveying the property to the purchaser upon completion of all terms and conditions. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, that the offer to purchase real property committed by SMR acquisitions for the property located at 405 University Drive in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is accepted subject to the completion of the terms outlined in the letter of intent and the sales agreement concluded, concluded by the parties. Section 2, the mayor is authorized and directed to sign the letter of intent and an agreement for the sale of property consistent with the letter of intent, and the city clerk will attest the mayor's signature if needed. The city attorney is authorized to sign the letter of intent also. Section 3, the mayor is further authorized and, authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the purchaser a warranty deed conveying the property to the purchaser upon the purchaser having paid the consideration for the property and all other terms and conditions of the sales agreement being satisfied. The city clerk will attest the mayor's signature on the deed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the sale of real property and to execute and deliver a deed of conveyance in accordance with the terms of the agreement. The floor is now open for discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I want to address this to, uh, the city clerk, Ms. Whitfield, uh, because I really just looked at the back of this, and she was concerned that it was, it was really sent to her and her office, uh, at Water Group, and apparently she never saw it. It was brought to my, when, uh, when I signed the resolution, the letter was not attached to it, and it was brought to me by, uh, Ms. Laura Walker from Community Development. And, and I do think that that was kinda tacky, because it was, it was written to, it was addressed to Ms. Whitfield.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Where will the, the funds that, once a sale is made, will they go back to Community Development, or will they come to the general fund?
Will they come back and use all their federal fund?
That's what I thought, okay.
Well, I was hoping we'd have some money, we could do something.
Okay, but y'all can use it. Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
I think the Dollar Store is planning on expanding in the fourth ward over there on University Drive, so that's, that's, that's a good thing, so.
Yeah, correction, they are not expanding, they're building a new store.
Well, I bet you gonna build another one here.
I would like the council to know that this will be the first major, new university that I've ever called, other than this one. And that, uh, Laura does be working hard on this project. We also have a whole, a system for everything that goes in on University Drive, some of this first project on it, so it, it will be seen all the way down to University Drive, uh, given the character and, uh, that we desire to have out in this part. We've been working with the Dollar Store for about, most of this, we've started, no, good thing.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none?
Just wanna thank y'all for y'all's support on that. It's a, it's a new building coming in the fourth ward.
Okay, hearing none, uh, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with BKND Limited for an audit of the city's financial records and transactions for the calendar years 2010 to 2013, and earlier years if needed.
Whereas Resolution Number 3601 passed on May 3, May 20th, 2013, authorized and directed the mayor to use the BKND accounting firm to perform an audit of the city's financial records and transactions for the calendar years 2010, 2011, and 2012. And if further review is needed of earlier transactions to provide, provide context and explanation to actions taken during the time period, the firm may review years prior to 2010. Whereas the, and whereas agreement as to the scope of BKND services and char, and charges respecting this undertaking has been reached and detailed in the attached letter of engagement. And whereas it is the desire of the council to accept and approve the terms set forth in the letter of engagement and direct the mayor to sign the letter for the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section 1, the terms and considerations set forth in the attached letter of engagement with BKND Limited are accepted and approved. The mayor is authorized and directed to sign for, sign for the city the letter of engagement. Section 2, BKND shall conduct the audit and make a report on reports outlined in the letter of engagement, of its findings, conclusions, and recommendations to the mayor and the city council as soon as possible. Section 3, all city departments and agencies are directed to cooperate fully with the audit and provide documentation and answer questions as requested.
Move for adoption.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with BKND for an audit of the city's financial records and transactions for the calendar years 2010 through 2013 and earlier years if needed. The floor is now open for discussion?
Now, Mayor, that, that agreement, it calls for some specific things that they're gonna be addressing in this, uh, uh, you address that to the council, what areas that, that is gonna be concerned. See, they had three, they had three things, they had three amounts.
Um, okay, I'd like to say that, and Alderman Brummett, uh, will go into further detail with this, but we did have an opportunity to meet with them, and our city treasurer, Greg Gustick, myself, along with, uh, Alderman Brummett, had the opportunity to meet with them, so.
I was looking for the amount because, yeah, they had three different scopes of areas that they were gonna be looking at, for, as far as the audit was concerned. And they had different amounts for the, uh, audit.
The idea is for them to do an overall risk assessment for the City of Pine Bluff, basically to look at how we handle our money and be sure there are checks and balances in place, uh, and that they've been properly followed in the past. The idea is to get us to a point where we're confident in where we are, and I wanna thank Ms. Walker, because she's the one that first brought this to my attention and raised means that we wanted to try to pursue something like this. Um, and the idea will be that they will then look at those, do what's called a risk assessment. Once they're done with that, they will report back to the council. If they find that there's a need to go further, they will. We will then authorize them to go further in the process of looking at specific departments or specific projects or whatever within the city, uh, financial concerns.
And in this risk assessment, be, uh, what are they actually, be actually doing, and this be part of the audit?
They will be actually, initially will be interviewing the department heads and reviewing with them the policies that control the financial, uh, income, expenses, and so on for each department, and then maybe one to two layers within the department to be sure that everybody is on target and on track. You know, their idea is they're not gonna be out trying to find, uh, you know, to, uh, make somebody look bad or something like that, they're just trying to make sure that we, we're, uh...
In other words, they're not gonna be looking at any detailed sampling of the, of the records themselves.
They will do some sampling, yes. They will do some sampling.
I, I, well, uh, I believe in, um, our city treasurer might be able to help us out as well, but it's called a high-level risk assessment, and with a high-level risk assessment, we have given them copies of, um, the, um, um, charts of each department. And with that, they will call different people in from each department, and they will have specific questions that they will ask them. So it's an interview process as far as the high-level risk, risk assessment goes. And then from those questions, they will determine if, um, they need to go into more detail with each department. And what they've got is a couple people on board that do nothing but high-level risk assessment within BKND.
That was my concern, I wanted us to understand that the fact that they're not gonna be looking at any, they're not gonna be doing any sampling of these financial records in this high-risk, uh, assessment. They're not gonna be doing that. There will be some interviews, some personnel, but they're not gonna go into the detailed records of what's gonna be taking place with the city. And I think that, I think that needs to be brought out so we'll understand that when they come back with their report, that none of that will take place. And if they find something as a result of their interview, then they will come back to the table, then we'll have to come back here, and there could be some additional, uh, finances that we'll have to, to, to do in order for them to move further into the audit process.
I think our city treasurer, uh, Mr. Gress, would you like to elaborate on this as well? Because I, they will do some sampling.
Mayor and, uh, that clerk and city council, yes, we're gonna do, I live all the way across the board, all corners. And then after those questions have been answered or asked, we also then, uh, we have some key areas and stuff that we've kind of looked at. Uh, and y'all remember, I was city treasurer for 12 years before I'm here in IAS, and reports and stuff have changed over so many years, and my reports and stuff's not have, not quite have some of that information that we used to have years ago. So I've been kind of concerned on this, and this is why we're kind of going into the general , so yes, there will be some, yes, there will be some, just going down the end to say, but we first gotta start out with how to oversee what's in place.
Here's what it says here, Greg. Now, this is what you're talking about in the contract, a high-level risk assessment based on interviews, inquiry only, no sampling or detailed review of any documents. Now, that's what it says here. Now, you're saying that it's gonna be different, but there will be a contract signed, and if there's gonna be some detailed sampling in there, then it needs to be stated in the contract. But based on what we, what we have here, the engagement fees from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, they're not gonna do any of the things that you're talking about they were gonna do, unless they're gonna change some things in the wording here.
Well, our original plan that was discussed and talked about was to start out, you said the high-risk assessment, but if we bump into something...
But I understand, but see, but what happened when you start talking about high-risk assessment, yeah, everybody might not be into numbers. I'm into numbers, and that's how I make my living. So I don't wanna come here and say something here, and then we leave here, Greg, thinking that what, we gonna have some detailed analysis of what is taking place. And I know with the kind of money you're talking about, you ain't talking about no whole bunch of sampling or detailing, and that's what they're saying here, it's not gonna take place.
Well, we're gonna be interviewing the chief, uh, just like the first department head, and then we're gonna be interviewing, the next we're interviewing the actual people in charge of the finances for that department, that's the report we're gonna do. So that's what we're gonna be getting, right?
Well, on page four, on page four, on your responsibilities at the bottom of the page, on the fourth page, you agree to supply all the necessary information and allow access to personnel to assist in performing our services. That's more like a, a detailed audit.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, I did have some concerns, and I called, uh, Alderman Brummett about it, because my concerns were, uh, at the end of 2012 and through 2012, and at the end, we were supposed to be in good financial condition. And, you know, into the first quarter of 2013, then our money is running short, and, um, and the departments are asked to cut their budget, and so therefore, and, and I think it's gonna happen some more. So therefore, I felt that it behooved of us to find out exactly where we are, and, uh, so I did call him, uh, about this. And, uh, even though I got the ball rolling, I was not invited to, uh, the meeting that you stated, you know, with, uh, you, Mayor, uh, Alderman Brummett, and, uh, the treasurer, Mr. Gustick.
Whatever you expecting, you ain't gonna get much for the money you spending.
Well, I'm, I'm just expecting some clarity, so that we'll know where we are.
I think we'll have to move forward with the next step, which is more of a forensic look at everything, once they go through what they, they wanted to get, make sure that all the procedures are properly followed. And if they discover something that we're gonna pick out probably, to Ways and Means Committee, we'll come back and look at this and help them evaluate and their findings and probably identify two to three to four depart- and probably identify two to three to four departments that we may have some concerns with, which I know you have some as well.
I think within, with their scope, they're going to have some criteria that they're going to measure by. And with that criteria, and they'll be able to, through the interview process, be able to pull out what they need and figure out which departments, if any.
So the next meeting, maybe I'll be invited.
Any other discussion? Thank you, sir. Okay. All in favor say aye, please. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes our agenda, Mayor.
Thank you very much. This concludes our meeting for the night.